Hi, everybody. I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television. And we are on the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus today. We're in the Cultural Arts Center. We're actually in the gallery. And as always, if you're watching online and you're close by, come on and join us. We have plenty of chairs. And it is a beautiful venue here. Now, we're going to deviate slightly from our normal routine for Town Hall. As everyone knows, the spring opening meeting was canceled due to inclement weather. So we have invited the three senior vice presidents from the college. And they are going to share with us what they were going to present at the meeting. Now, once they are finished with their remarks, then we'll go into the normal Town Hall format. But you can ask questions of Dr. Pollard or of any of the three senior vice presidents. And as always, you can email your questions to townhall@montgomerycollege.edu. So without further ado, here's Dr. Pollard.
Wow. Well, good morning, everyone. I am delighted to be here. Happy to spend time at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus. Want to immediately do a thanks to the folks here at this campus for the work they do and making sure that we could be here. But I got to give a big shout out and much love to my MCTV, some of my favorite people. Because in order to make this happen, they have to do a lot. And then I make them even more nervous by showing up five minutes before it starts. So I want to thank them for everything they do all the time to make the college shine, but also to make this event successful. Those of you coming in, there's plenty of seats down front, so feel free to do that. It's okay to walk in. We tend to be a little bit informal. I am not Dr. Sanjay Rai. But you're going to see a video of Dr. Sanjay Rai. He is representing the college at a meeting today. And he's going to kick off these reports and updates by the senior vice presidents. And I'll come back and we'll move into a regular format. So with that, I will lob it to MCTV to do their work.
Good morning. I am so sorry that I cannot join you in person today. However, since we missed the opportunity to meet and celebrate the beginning of the spring semester, I am grateful that technology makes it possible for me to speak to you today. I have spoken with many of you over the past two and a half months since Dr. Pollard asked me to serve as the interim senior vice president for academic affairs. I continue to be humbled and grateful for the trust and responsibility that she and all of you have expressed in me. You have my sincere thanks. I return that trust in you as we continue forward together toward our noble aspirations. This year, many countries will commemorate the centenary of the First World War, the war to end all wars. In the United States, we will celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act. Today, we see a world that is still confronting conflict. But we also see a world where there is a remarkable communication, cooperation, collaboration, and global economic competition. Today, in my colleagues and in our students, I see the changing world. Our responsibility to prepare our students to thrive in today's world is a crucial one. Education is the key that unlocks opportunity for our students. We are an open access institution. But access alone does not afford the opportunity that is the promise of higher education. We need to transform access into success. To that end, I am focusing on three major initiatives that will impact student success. Number one, restructuring the college's academic areas. Number two, re-invisiting our general education core requirements. Number three, in response to the recently passed College and Career Readiness and College Completion Act of 2013, providing program-based advising for every student in a degree program. This is a daunting agenda. But because of my frequent and ongoing conversations with many of you, I am excited. I have heard ideas from the academic restructuring workgroups that excite and inspire me and give evidence of the need for a new structure that will bring vital energy to the college as we create a future for ourselves and prepare our students for theirs. These efforts will create consistency college-wide, which means consistent opportunity for students. So what are some of the hallmarks? Department and discipline leadership will reside with 12-month chairs. This will strengthen the campus role and allow for local decision-making. Deans will focus on aligned cluster of disciplines. They will facilitate collaboration within and across their areas and will focus on college-wide initiatives and national innovations. The new structure will allow us to focus on our mission. Academic leaders will have opportunity, responsibility, authority, and accountability. Remember, our college, through effective leadership, will be characterized by agility and relevance as it meets the dynamic challenges facing our students and community. Last week, we entered a one-month review period, giving you the opportunity to read all of the workgroup's recommendations. Please take advantage of this time and give us your feedback. You can email us. You can attend information sessions that will be scheduled throughout this month. You can speak one-on-one with any workgroup member. Decisions will be made in March, once we have heard from you. I want to thank the members of the seven workgroups for their exemplary service to the college during the last five months. At the same time, we are faced with many questions surrounding general education. How do we transform the traditional balance of major requirements, general education requirements, and electives that have long been the standard for a college degree? What is the new balance of specialized and general education? How can online resources enhance the quality and the accessibility of our degree programs? How do we do all of this while addressing the stagnant completion rates? This is our current reality. Transforming general education in ways that address these issues is a vital step. I have asked faculty council to work with the college-wide curriculum committee to appoint a group of faculty to take this on. I am happy to report that Professor Perry, Dr. Kenamui, and Professor Farrell will lead the committee's efforts. A recent article in The Atlantic examines the impact of intrusive advising and mentoring. It states that students at the bottom, whose life histories and social disadvantages make them the most likely to need clear guidance and structure, receive astonishingly little of either. Meanwhile, students at the super selective top encounter solicitous oversight every step of the way. Harvard offers a bachelor's degree in 48 academic fields to full-time residential students and provides an entire team of advisors and mentors. Montgomery College, on the other hand, offers more than 100 degree and certificate programs to mostly part-time students. Let's make sure that our students are provided with a clear path to completion that shows what their effort must be and what ours will be. When only 16% of students graduate and just over 20% transfer within four years, we need to determine what has happened to the other 64%. We will respond to the 2013 Completion Act and provide each student with program-based advising. We will be intrusive. What will we achieve through these three initiatives? Higher completion rates, a shorter time to completion, a reduction in the cost of a degree or certificate, increased relevance of degree programs, impact on economic development of the county and state. With a sense of urgency for the future, Montgomery College will be a national model of excellence, opportunity, and student success. Our students trust that we will empower them to change their lives, to succeed academically, and ultimately, to be prosperous, successful members of a vibrant global community. This is our mission. I hope that the first two weeks of the semester have gone smoothly. Thank you. I look forward to my return and seeing many of you.
And now we turn it over to Dave Sears, Senior Vice President for Advancement and Community Engagement. Dave?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Before we get started, the one thing I would like to do is let's thank our MCTV crew for the amazing job they're going to do today. Michael Brown, Francine Wyron, you guys are great. Thank you. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the four Cs. Our campaign, communications, our community engagement effort, and my favorite one at the end is to talk about caring. So to get started on the campaign, we're going to launch a $30 million comprehensive campaign. It's our largest ever in the college's history. This campaign is very student-focused and faculty and staff-focused. And Carol Ronrude, who's our Director of Development, is going to be the leader on this effort. We have seven campaign priorities that are very student-centered. We have our Montgomery College Promise, which is an initiative to get $1,000 need-based scholarships to low-income students from MCPS who graduate. They also, as part of the criteria, they have to have a solid attendance record in high school. And they also have to have a good GPA. Doesn't have to be a great GPA, but a good GPA. And we'll be sharing the information shortly about how that's going to be a public-private partnership of our philanthropy with college resources and county resources as well. We're looking at supporting the ACES program, our Dreamer scholarships, our Innovation Fund, our Global Humanities Institute match. We have to match a grant from NEH. And important things also are unrestricted funds. And finally, one of the most important things we need right now are student and staff and faculty emergency assistance funds. And I have a good story at the end to tell you about that. We need your help in five ways. We need you to identify prospective donors. We all know somebody who can give. We need you to help us cultivate. Come on a lunch with me and talk to one of our donors and tell your passion for your program or for working with students. We need you to communicate, share your passion, tweet it out, email it out, communicate it, put your stories in our newsletters, in our alumni magazine. We need you to give. I'm going to tell you a story about how we collectively helped a student this past month in an amazing way with gifts of $25, $50, $100. And finally, we need you to say thank you. And what I want to remind you especially is some of our best donors are the people sitting next to you, the people you work with. We have amazing faculty and staff that give back through the MC Foundation. Communications is my second C. As you know, we've initiated a communications audit to improve our internal and external communications. We have two initial findings. The first is that the growth in communications modalities has not mirrored the growth of the organization. So we haven't branched out the way in which we communicate as we've gotten larger and larger as an institution. And secondly, what we found is there's a lot of communication style differences between the generations of faculty, students, and staff that we have. But our communications aren't keeping up with those style differentiations. We need to match those up so that you receive the information better and we transmit it better to you based on how you like to be communicated. So for our next steps with the communications audit, we're doing surveys, January and February with our students. And then from February to March, we'll be doing that with our employees. We've already had 500 students respond to the survey, which is outstanding. We want the same type of participation from you all as faculty and staff. As we move forward, there's a couple other things we're doing. We're hiring a strategic communications director who'll help implement the audit's recommendations. We'll be launching our website redesign shortly. What we wanted to do was to get our 508 web accessibility compliance done first so that our students that need that accessibility, they were our first priority. Now we can look at the broader web redesign. And we'll be sharing a plan on that shortly. In terms of our community engagement and our outreach efforts, MCTV is going to be hiring a multicultural producer so that we can communicate not just in English, Spanish, and some other languages, so we can talk to the people in our communities in the languages that they know best. And finally, we started a translation services over the phone this year. We set aside about $20,000 for that. We've doubled that expense because of how many people are using that. We're going to expand those language translation services to the website and MCTV as part of our county request for this year. Few other things we're doing in communications. We're redesigning the MC logo. Right now, it looks like M with a paper punch. We want it to really say MC. And be as good and as great as our Raptors, our brand-new Raptors logo. We're instituting a presidential communications plan. That's part of the audit, is that we need to strengthen what we're doing in terms of presidential communications. As I said, our continued effort with our 508 standards for compliance for accessibility, and we're implementing the report explanations, recommendations. So the communications audit, the internal piece will be done by March, April. The external communications audit recommendations will come to us in June. So your role in communications is one to stay informed. Read your college communications, read the memos. Stay informed, know what you're talking about, be able to help others to make sure that they're better informed. We need you to share your stories. Share your stories about your programs, about your students. Send them to our communications officers. We'll put it on social media. We'll tweet it out. It's a great way for us to spread the word about the good things we're doing here. And then if you're in charge of a webpage, your department, or your program, make sure it's updated. The best thing that you can do is to make sure that our students can read your program's story as it stands today and not where it stood a few years ago. The third C is community engagement. Our strategic plan calls for the development of two community engagement centers in the underserved areas by 2020. To lead this effort, we've hired Carla Silvestri, who's the former Latino liaison for the county executive. And let's give a warm welcome to Carla, who's here today. Currently, we're looking at Gaithersburg Library and East County Regional Services Center off of Brakes Chaney Road as the two potential locations. We're going to pilot programs there. Our goal is to try and see if we can't get these centers as pilots up and running by July first. Some of the other notable things that we're going to do, since Carla may be able to get these centers done six years ahead of schedule. She still needs work to do, so we're going to formalize MOUs with our partners. We're creating a community engagement roundtable where we can bring in people from neighborhoods, civic leaders, leaders of nonprofits, bring them together so that we're making sure that we're providing the educational needs of their constituencies. We continue to have our president's roundtable where we meet with CEOs in the county so that they know what we offer and we can understand what their workforce needs from us. Carla will be doing some great community engagement communications to keep you posted on all this. We'll continue to strengthen our partnerships with places like Family Justice Center and MKL. And then Carla will be looking at new partnerships which make the most sense for the college and for our community. So your role in this is identify potential partners, volunteer with your enrichment leave, join one of our community engagement projects or efforts, share your stories about working with community engagement and with Carla's office, and encourage our students to participate in these things, like the Accenture Service Learning Day, or take part in a discovery career panel. So with that, I want to close out with one story, a very touching, personal story that we had, and it's just amazing about caring, our final C. Amanda McIntosh came to me about two weeks ago. She said she had a single mother of several children. She was living in public housing. And she didn't pay the electric bill. They were going to turn off the electricity, which would mean she would lose her public housing. In the coldest month of the year, she'd be on the streets. Immediately, our MC Foundation folks, Donna Pina, Carol Ronrude, jump into action and pay the bill. And she paid the bill through our student and staff emergency assistance funds, which many of you in the room have given to, by $25, $50, $100. We get a note back from the student. She's able to stay in school through the effort. She's able to keep her kids warm. She's able to study now because of the lighting. We have just changed her life, and we've retained this student. We've given her a second chance. You've done an amazing job supporting this, and we have many more stories like this. Thank you to Amanda. And it's an incredible way about the caring of the people that work here, and I'm very proud to work with you all. So thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And now, we're going to hear from the Senior Vice President for Student Services, Dr. Beverly Walker Grafea. Dr. Grafea?
Good morning. I'd like to say thank you again to Institutional Advancement and the wonderful things that they do for our students day in and day out. That was just one example that Dave pulled out that happened last week. But then I got an email today that his staff was able to capture more money for our ACES program and to help those students to get scholarships and to pay for some of the resources. So I really want us to take a little moment to say thank you for all you do because care really is the C for Institutional Advancement. Well, in the president's opening meeting, she used the theme of the whiz, if any of you all remember. And as I thought about that, I really thought about, you know, Dorothy's story is so much like our student's story. And so I decided to really base my remarks on the Wizard of Oz. And so you see at the beginning that I'm talking about, we are intrusive, intentional, and focused. Oh my. It's the type of services that Student Services is providing to ensure that our students actually make it down that yellow brick road to reach their goals. As you know, we've been working diligently to help students like Dorothy that wake up and realize, we're not in Kansas anymore, Toto. So recommendations from the Seven Truths for a Common Student Experience actually led to theme-two development in our strategic plan, and then led to all of the strategic initiatives that I'm going to talk about now. Thousands of our students like Dorothy are looking for that magical pathway, as most of you know. They are trying to start smart. 18,000 received $66 million of aid last year. In December, 5,000 calls were taken at the Response Center, and 700 students actually attended our Raptor registration rallies. 7,000 students have visited our Welcome Centers since they opened in August. Just like a recent couple that came to one of our Welcome Center that really primarily spoke Persian. They wanted to learn English because they felt that that would help them to have a better life here. They were so, so astonished when they found that we had opened up our new language line. And their faces lit up, as I'm told, when they actually had someone speaking to them in their Persian dialect and able to explain what it was going to take for them to go through the English language classes with us. We have programs like ACES that are serving as foundations of support for 900 students in 10 high schools. The coaches are daily motivating, encouraging, and educating 11th and 12th graders. And in a few minutes, you're going to meet one of those students, Paulo. Paulo's a senior. She's deaf. She's undocumented. And she's from a family that speaks primarily Spanish. So you would think Paulo's not going to do very well. But Paulo is in ACES. And when she showed up, she told her coach, "I want to study law." So her coach found that there were many communication barriers, as you could imagine. And so she began meeting daily with her to ensure that she would be able to take that information, all of the things that Paulo would need to succeed, and create solutions for her, so that one day Paulo will be with us and Paulo will study law. Now, I love this part of the story, when students find the wizard. Like Elvis from Cameroon, winning the diversity lottery to study at MC. He watched his younger brother die as his entire village tried to heal him using traditional concoctions. His goal is to become a pharmacist with us. He says the reason he gets up every day is to see that no one suffers and dies as a result of medication ignorance. So our counselors are using developmental advising techniques to help all of our degree-seeking students like Elvis. Not those that are just in developmental courses. All degree-seeking students are going to be helped to cross that finish line. And those students are now starting with a mandatory academic orientation led by a counselor that introduces them to a degree plan, developmental advising, success networks, benchmarking, and tracking. And Starfish is the new tool that we use to support this effort that allows us to encourage and track them every step of the way. Finally, we're building community, teaching students that getting home is simply learning to believe in yourself. So student engagement has been diligently focused on providing leadership trainings, new student orientations, student internships, alternative break solutions, and winning athletic championships. Gabriel is a student that I'd like to talk about. He arrived from us just this August, three weeks before the soccer season. And he started with no one knowing anything about him, hadn't been recruited. He just walked on. And so, of course, he sat the bench, right? And he sat the bench for five games. In five games, he got five minutes of play total. Then, as things occur, the starting forward got hurt. And we saw Gabriel turn into a Division III First Team All-American. He scored 40 goals for us this season and was the leading goal scorer in Division I, II, and III. He is now being recruited heavily by top Division I schools. So now you hear why I say intrusive, intentional, and focused. Oh my. That's Student Services personnel. And here are a few video highlights to show what we do.
Montgomery College Welcome Centers are now open, serving as a principal access point for students, prospective students, and visitors alike.
The Welcome Centers were developed to provide a welcoming environment for students, community members, pretty much anyone on campus, to provide them with general information about the college, and then also to serve as as close to a one-stop for the enrollment process.
Each Welcome Center has a service counter, college brochures and literature, and computers for students to use to complete the steps of enrollment.
Students are getting their questions answered. It really warms me when I came into the office and I had an email from a student. And she really just wanted to express her gratitude at the staff for taking time to not just answer the question, but try to teach her a little bit about the enrollment process.
At Rockville High School, Senior Paola Cruz Flores has six months until graduation, but she's already thinking ahead to what's next.
When I joined ACES, really what I was thinking about, it just seemed that I could really focus and that there was a possibility and I could really look into the colleges.
Paola is a member of ACES, Achieving Collegiate Excellence and Success, a collaborative program between Montgomery County Public Schools, Montgomery College, and the universities at Shady Grove. The program has just completed its first semester with academic coaches in 10 county schools.
The students are really interested in the program. They're participating. The coaches are extremely enthusiastic, and I think that the program has been well-embraced by all of the schools.
It's definitely been a lot of fun and a learning process, the first year to get the ACES program up and running at the various high schools. And we're focusing really on that college prep, life prep piece.
And with newfound support, Cruz Flores is confident about her future.
Well, next year, I really hope to be in college. I hope.
Last fall, Montgomery College began using Starfish retention solutions to improve student success by facilitating the tracking and scheduling of student support services. Using Starfish, students are able to schedule advising meetings, access their educational plan, and connect with support services online.
Starfish is flexible and easily accessible. Starfish enables me to manage my time, and it has enabled me to develop an action plan that keeps me accountable.
Starfish also aids advisors in helping students cross the academic finish line.
What Starfish will do is allow the student to be more planful. It will allow the student also to connect to campus resources. also to connect to campus resources, it will hold the student accountable. And also, it's important to note that the benchmarks being specifically tracked are those tied to CCR/CCA compliance.
In the future, Starfish will be available for faculty to communicate with students and counselors to keep their students on track toward completion.
Montgomery College Athletics had another banner year in 2013. MC celebrated championship seasons in women's basketball, baseball, track and field, men's soccer, and volleyball. And to cap the year, Montgomery College unveiled its new mascot, the Raptor. And now, for an update from Administrative and Fiscal Services, here is interim Senior Vice President Janet Warmack.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you. Welcome, welcome, and I'm glad to be here. And I have a very, very long title and a very, very big job, and I'm proud to support everyone on our senior leadership team and the president and our students here at Montgomery College. My remarks will be very short and few. I want to bring you up to date on just a few things that we're doing here for Montgomery College this year. We have a lot of programs and a multitude of initiatives and projects happening in the Administrative and Fiscal Services area. I just want to focus on three major initiatives underway. Building and expanding capacity for teaching and learning, the expansion of our information technology services, and our progress on the common employee experience, known as the Destination Employer Initiative. Thanks to our facility staff and office staff, we continue to build our capacity for teaching and learning. As you all know, the Science East Building on the Rockville campus, which is now part of the Science Center complex, has been renovated and opened. The renovated center will increase our capacity to deliver courses in the science, technology, engineering, and math programs. Also underway and in progress is the Bioscience Education Center on the Germantown campus. This new facility will add 145,139 gross square feet, as Dr. Yates tells me, to the campus, and adds much-needed laboratory space and instructional areas for biotechnology and other related programs. I hope many of you realize that that will be a 43% increase to the size of that campus. So that's a huge impact and a great, great progress for our college. And of course, at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, we are in progress for the renovation for the P3 building. It's currently in the design stage, and we look for construction to start in the summer of July 2014, and for classes to begin in that facility again in the fall of 2015. Renovation of that building will add six classrooms, and I'm proud to say 26 faculty offices, and then other related space and instructional support areas. Moving on to our information technology, as many of us know, information technology plays a critical and vital role in our classrooms, obviously, and in our administration. And through the work of our wonderful staff in the Office of Information Technology, we've been able to enhance some services this year. We've expanded services on our help desk, providing those Saturday services that are much needed for our students and our staff. We've also commenced the implementation, as you know, of the common set of log-on credentials. Back in October, all employees and students began this process with the Claim Your Account initiative. In addition, limiting the amount of spam and phishing emails, right? We all know the issues with security these days, that end up in our college email boxes is a priority. So one of the ways the college currently keeps your data safe is by using an email spam filtering software to control those emails from reaching your email box. So beginning this month, we are now implementing a new email spam filtering software solution. So look for new and improved services in that data protection area. And coming to a location near you, and should have and would have been deployed in some locations, we have deployed 15 mobile power stations at various locations and campuses, making it easier for our students and staff to stay connected and, of course, powered up, because we all know our power goes down all the time. Finally, we are embarking on the initial steps of defining the destination employer for Montgomery College. We all love working here, and we know this is a great place to work, and it's a great place for our students to be here and learn here. So one of the priorities for the president is to ensure that our workforce is enlightened, engaged, and empowered to provide world-class service to our students. But in order to do this, we need to attract, select, and of course, retain those of us who are here, and develop our extraordinary talent, both internally and from the external college. So the Office of Human Resources will embark on a collaborative process this spring with the college community to develop and discuss a proposed definition of the destination employer. So look for more information to come about that, and I encourage you to participate in those forums and discussions and provide your feedback, which you always do anyway, but I encourage you to do that even more so. And finally, I want to recognize all the staff, of course, our facility staff for the last couple of weeks, because they've done some great work keeping our campuses safe so that we can get here, no matter what time that is, but so that we can be here. I hope you all know that they basically work all night to make sure that the sidewalks are safe and the parking lots are clear so that we can be here. I also want to recognize two safety and security officers, Dan Wilson and Yasmele Rodriguez, for saving the life of a student. They were honored and recognized by our county executive this past fall, and I just want you to know that through their efforts, and of course, the efforts of many others, that we all are here to save lives and change lives, and they did a wonderful job for our students. So I just want you all to give them a round of applause and thank them for their work. Thank you all.
I want to thank the four Senior Vice Presidents for their presentation, and now turn it back over to Dr. Pollard.
Well, I don't know about you all, but I got very excited listening to several of the things that were talked about, and I really want to thank my senior team for taking the role, and this is a lot of what we would have done in the opening meeting, but we tried to condense it into a conversation today so that you could have lots of information. Hopefully, it would not have all been new to you, you would have seen it in different spaces and places, but more importantly, sparked conversations beyond this space and place as you're working within the organization. Just a couple of things I want to highlight and then open up for questions. I know we have at least two, possibly some more. I am really excited about our MCTV in December. I did a holiday video that many of you would have seen that really was simply based on the concept of what do students need? And there were some things as simple as a bus pass, things saying, "I need a car, I need access to this, I want to go see, I need to see my brother in France who I haven't seen, excuse me, in a couple of years." But what's very important about that, that really sparked me to think about what do MC students need? So you will have seen, I did my Welcome Back video for the spring semester to our students. I asked them to follow me on Twitter, for one, because sometimes I share funny things, sometimes I share other things. But what's really important about that is that I want you to use the hashtag #WhatMCStudentsNeed and to let me know what those needs are as we think about the current situation of the organization and the future of Montgomery College. I want to hear about your desires and your interest about having active access to certain types of things, at the same time, some of the things that really would help you be successful. So please, I hope that you all are taking the opportunity to participate in that. And I also think that that is not just our students, but our employees, faculty, and staff who talk to students. Let me know that. And I kind of want to start a movement about this and to see this gain legs throughout not only just our county and state, but possibly even nationally. What do MC students need? So please, take advantage of that opportunity. I'll join Janet in thanking our outstanding facility staff. I don't know about how many of you all know what goes into the decision, one, is the college will stay open, if the college will have a delayed opening or close, but it is a laborious process. We are monitoring the National Weather Service, we're having thoughtful conversations with the county, and what I think is always driving the primacy of that decision is the safety of our students and our employees. And literally, as Janet said, they are here overnight monitoring these things, they're trying to figure out how they can get parking lots and sidewalks safe, and they're also thinking very deliberately at how we communicate. So we often talk about our facility staff, I did a shout-out to them, I want to thank our emergency planning people who are engaged with that. I want to thank our communications team, because then, the next call at 4:30 in the morning is to Beth Holman and her team, and she's got to get up and go and put that information out. So I really want to thank everyone who's involved in that decision and who thinks very deliberately about student experience. Restructuring, you heard Dr. Ry talk about this earlier, he mentioned a series of different workshops, excuse me, open sessions that are going to be happening on the campuses to get feedback. I think Sanjay is very interested in hearing perspectives, please make sure that you participate in that, and very importantly, we get everyone engaged in that conversation. I want to bring your attention to some recent good news stories that you may or not have heard about. All of what you just saw and heard by the folks who are up here talking speaks to something that's very, I think, powerfully happening within our organization and is being recognized externally. Montgomery College was invited, and mind you, you have to be invited to submit an application, to apply for the Aspen Institute's Community College Excellence Award. This is a $1 million purse that 150 community colleges of about 1,100 are invited to apply, and there's a series of steps, and then they identify finalists, a top 10, and then they'll move to number one. When I first started the college, I said, "Wow, it'd be really nice at some point for Montgomery College in the next 10 years to be able to make the invitation list." Here we are, we've made the invitation list. And what I thought was important, this is an outcomes-driven initiative, they look at graduation retention, they look at disparity between various ethnic groups, and they make sure that we're being equitable in the success of our students. And then they also look at systems and processes that we are putting in place to ensure student success. So I'm very excited about that. Don't know if we'll get it, but the fact that we got invited is huge for us. Sue Meck, many of you may remember, one of a student at Montgomery College, she graduated, I believe, last year? 2011, she graduated in 2011. She suffered at 22 a traumatic brain injury where a ceiling fan fell on her head, and she lost all of her memory of her husband and her children. She later came back to college at Montgomery College. Thanks to, again, Beth and some work that she did, connected her with The Washington Post, who did an initial story on her. And now Sue Meck has a book that has been released today, this Tuesday. I Forgot to Remember is her memoir that was inspired by the Washington Post article, and she really calls out some people in this book, not only calling out Montgomery College as helping to save her life, she called out professors in other departments, Sue Adler, Bill Cole, Gus Griffin, Sharon Ward, Phi Theta Kappa Student Honor Society, the Pawpek Humanities Institute internship. If you're interested in purchasing the book, which I hope you are, our MC Books and More will have copies, and we're providing a 20% discount on that, so please do it. She's been on the Today Show, she's been everywhere, and every time she talks about this college, so we're very excited for her and the opportunities await her. Last week, we also had Dr. Wall was recognized, Greg Wall, as a 2013 Maryland Professor of the Year, and had a proclamation, was recognized by the Montgomery County Council, in that he said something I thought was such an humble thought, but he says, "I'm really not doing anything differently than my faculty colleagues," and all the things you just heard in the proclamation of what we're doing every day at Montgomery College. So it is truly a great honor to be here today on behalf of my colleagues, because in my mind, they are all standing beside me." What a beautiful, huh, chills. And then finally, another outstanding faculty member, Professor Emily Rosado, is on the shortlist of four, I believe, four or six faculty who are being nominated for Faculty Excellence Award at the National AACC based on faculty innovation. You can recall, we've done some work, not talking about her work in terms of her MOOC, the massive online course that she's been doing. Really want to thank that, and look forward to April to see if she will win that award. But great things are happening at the college, and every day, I wake up very excited about that. So with it, I'm going to open up for questions. I think we've got a good 15 minutes or so, and I'm willing to stay afterwards because we had a lot of stuff here. It's on you, my friend.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard. Again, you can email your questions to townhall@montgomerycollege.edu. We're going to try to get to as many questions as we can, the short amount of time that we have, so please keep your questions brief and make sure you identify yourself before you ask those questions. And our first question is a web question. It comes from Sumita Kim. She would like to thank you for taking her question on the faculty pay disparity issue, and she's wondering if you might be willing to share any progress on your research on this matter, and if there are any new developments.
Sure. Thank you, Professor Kim, and I thank you. What I love about her question is the implicit part about accountability in here. So it's one thing to ask a question, and I'll say I'm going to get back to you, so thank you, Sumita, for that. So we started some initial conversations with HRDE, they're actually, I think there's a staff meeting, a series of staff meetings that have occurred, there's going to be another one, I just, when I saw her question asked, they are going to be having a meeting, if I'm correct, just tomorrow on this again, oh, next week, excuse me, additional staff meetings on this. What I think is important about this is a broader conversation, and how do we link this initiative regarding faculty pay disparity with the work that we're doing right now with staff pay disparities? And then the other part that's very critical about this, how does this all connect, as to Janet's point about the destination employer? So we have to fit all of these things together, but I have to tell you what I think is really interesting, a solution probably has to be found initially in how we place employees. And I think that, if I were to put an idea out there, I know that's part of the conversation that's being had. So we are working on that. I also do know a collective bargaining team, if I'm correct, and our labor relations has brought this issue up as a conversation, so I look forward to continued work on that. There's not an easy solution, and I'm much more interested in figuring out how to do it the right way versus trying to have quick solutions to that. But we're working on it, I haven't forgot about you.
Okay, we have a question here in the audience?
Hi, I'm Trinetta. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Trinetta. I'm deeply interested, given the fact that we're doing some academic restructuring, there seems to be a tremendous amount of progress and focus in the STEMS program, but as a humanities major and an English major, I'm kind of curious to wonder about what you guys are going to do as a college to kind of focus integrating studies with more of the humanities, literary, and creative side with English.
Well, I appreciate that question, because I believe that all good things in life start with English majors. I will admit that I'm probably somewhat biased in that, but we know how to read, we know how to write, we know how to communicate, and we can see the big picture and the small picture, and I'll stop right there before I put too much of my biases out there. That being said, I think that's actually is the intent of our restructuring program. One of the, it's interesting, you mentioned STEM, there's a great interest that's happening nationally to actually make that into STEAM and add the arts, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, because it's a very clear idea that people are saying, it's one thing to talk about STEM in very thoughtful ways, but what the humanities bring to us is this ability to understand people. The humanities gives us a way to look at central themes that transcend time, they give us the ability to communicate them and make what I think very thoughtful observations about the world that we live in, and they help us to, at certain extent, if we listen to history, not to repeat the same mistakes over and over again. I'm not quite sure if we do that. I'm reading this right now, what's the trilogy book that's out right now? Oh, doggone it, it's post-apocalyptic, and these teenagers are in Chicago right now?
Divergent.
Divergent. So I'm reading the Divergent series, and I just don't, anybody tell me it happened in book three, I just finished book two. But what's interesting about this, they found out now that they are living an experiment to try to help the future, right, or something like that. So what I think is a powerful, I think the humanities play that role. I think academic restructuring will have that intent. There is so much good work that happens individually on our campuses, whether it be a writing program here, a reading series here, the idea is how do we create a comprehensive experience for all students across that? How do we look at innovation in those areas? How do we bolster them in very real ways? I also think the pendulum tends to swing in academia in many different ways. We see great calls for access, when the economy is doing well, the pendulum swings the other way, and you'll see great calls for greater scrutiny, who comes into higher ed when the economy is getting bad again, right? So you have this kind of, it's the same thing, I think, that happens. We saw for a long time, we placed a lot of emphasis on the arts and the growth of that, to the detriment, I think, of STEM programs. Now you're seeing the pendulum swing all the way, "Oh, we got it, you know, we are not leading the world anymore on these issues." You read every, it's a crisis every time you hear about it. I believe the truth in life is that most things lie in the middle, so we have to figure out how to create that balance. I think the reorg will help us have those conversations. But thank you for your question.
And we have another question here in the audience?
Hello.
Hello. My name is Alex Gattacho, lucky to be the president of the Student Senate on this campus.
Congratulations.
And I very much appreciate the spirit of this discussion. I wanted to let you know, the group of us in the Senate have been discussing this topic of restructuring, and I wanted to know what might you see as an appropriate role we could play to be informed and be able to answer students' questions on the matter.
Thank you for that question. You know, one of the things I think is important is that all of this work where You know, one of the things I think is important is that all of this work we're doing has two purposes. One is to align the curriculum in ways for our faculty to be able to craft the innovation that they see that needs to happen in their disciplines, but also to create equity across the campuses. And one of the ways in which we know that will happen is the student engagement in that conversation. The whole academic restructuring was actually based on a question from a student that was posed to me in my first semester here at the Germantown campus when I was sitting in an open forum, very similar to this. And a student posed a series of very provocative questions. "Why can't I do this at this campus when I was at this campus I can do this? Why don't I have access to this piece of software? Why don't I have this lab?" And it was, it just kind of blew my mind to have that conversation. As we started to unpack that, we started to see lots of things. Over the next month, there's going to be a series of open forums. The students can come in, one, and after you've read the report, which is available online, Academic Affairs Online, they have a whole website dedicated to this, read the report, get actively engaged in that, attend the forums. I mean, that's a, it's not just an inform for faculty and staff, it's for students to be actively engaged. We have our governance groups, as you described, our Student Senate and Student Councils. Give your feedback and participation there. I know that Dr. Rye, I was at the college council just this past week, giving an update on that. They will constantly continue to do that. Dr. Carolyn Terry, who's going to be heading that initiative in a lot of ways for Dr. Rye, very important, you stay connected with her as well. So, I think there are a wonderful opportunity. It's part of that is to stay informed and then make sure your voice is heard. Thank you.
We have another question right here in the front row.
Awesome.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
My name is Rochelle Downs, and I write for the school newspaper. I'm actually in the process of writing an article about academic restructuring now, and I just wanted to hear from you. What are three ways that you think students will benefit from academic restructuring?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yes, that's okay. Sorry. They wonder if we can go a little bit longer. I said, "Yes, sorry about that." What are the ways in which students will benefit from academic restructuring? Is that the just, I'm sorry, so three ways you said? One is that they will see a greater alignment in curriculum across the institution. I think they will see a greater alignment, also support services to assist students across the curriculum at all three campuses. True. And I think they will also see greater innovation that will occur based on the work that faculty and staff are doing to look at these issues in a discipline across all three campuses. There is some phenomenal work that I'm hearing about already as faculty and staff who've already been working in these work groups now see the alignment of their areas. They're already thinking about the ways in which, hmm, how can we look at providing a consolidated support structure for students? How do we look at ways in which we assess outcomes for students in these courses? How do we think deeply about the equipment needs and the future technology and classroom spaces that are needed? That, to me, is three direct ways where students will benefit. But also going to a couple of the other points that were mentioned earlier, I think the idea of general education, how we pronounce what general education should be about and consistency across that, transferability, advising to students that would be at the program level as well. We have outstanding counselors who do great work with students, particularly helping them figure out what they want to do and how they're going to get there. But once you get in a discipline, you need to be able to understand what that discipline means from the faculty who teach and live in that discipline. So, that's part of the work that's going to occur there as well. Great question. Funky shoes, true. Like it.
All right. We have another question from the audience.
All right. Go students! Y'all are on fire!
Hi.
Hi.
I'm intrigued again with the theme of community engagement, particularly, I'm a Prince George's County resident, and I know that there are so many students from Prince George's County and DC that decided to come here. And we have choices with regards to PGCC and UDC. And I'm really intrigued to know, like, what is the college plan on doing with making their roots deeper in Prince George's County and also in DC? Because we choose this college for a reason. You guys rank fantastic, and we feel like we can get something tremendous from both the campus community and academically here that we can't get anywhere else.
Well, I hate to be one to say this, but I think my colleagues at Prince George's Community College and Community College of District of Columbia would be very upset if I told them that Montgomery College is going to be stepping into their territory. In fact, I bet Charlene Dukes is calling me right now. So, we would never deliberately, and I think intentionally, be to go out and try to craft community engagement presence there. However, as you all know, we are on the border. I think if we walk a block this way, we'll be in DC. So, the very nature of what we do is very important to that. I think we also recognize the fact that many of our students, as you described, go in between many different things. I know we also have some things with bus routes. You want, oh, here, look at this. You want to chime in?
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Pollard.
No problem.
So, I think in terms of community engagement, we look at, we've got students from 160, 170 countries. We have students from 48 states. When we look at Prince George's and Washington DC, one of the things that we're doing now is we're going to really focus on some retention marketing in the DC area and around bus stops. We're going to do some digital signage that'll roll out our Raptors logo, but it's also going to really market some of our specific programs, like our STEM initiatives, some of the things that we're doing in the arts. Business is our largest major. We'll be also focusing on that. And when you look at our East County Regional Services Centers, right there at Briggs-Cheney, it's fairly convenient to Prince George's, but obviously, we can't cross the line. But we're also going to try and make sure that not only our Montgomery County students, but all of our students, PG, international, Washington DC, that they're more aware of our offerings in terms of scholarships and need-based assistance. And so, I think those are some of the ways in which we're going to try and address those students. And we would welcome any suggestions, students like you have, to make things better.
Nicely done, Mr. Sears. Yes, sir.
We have another question right here in the audience. If you would stand up, please.
Hi, my name is Lindsay. I'm hoping to become soon a biotechnology major, so I'm really psyched about that new building, that seems to be the building. The problem is, I don't actually have a car, and so getting to Germantown is really difficult. And I have heard sort of whispers about an inter-campus transport thing that's in progress, but we didn't really talk about it here. So, I was wondering if maybe you could tell me about any progress on that particular front.
Oh, Lindsay, can I take you with me when I go talk to people? One of the things I think is so powerful about this question, the college several years ago actually had some type of transport service. And there was a, first, I think there was a county initiative that helped us, and then we went to a college-based initiative. And then based on a lack of user shipping and that, to be quite frank, fiscal challenges, that was eliminated. I am more and more convinced that we need to bring this back to the forefront for exactly the reasons you say. As you document, a student who's living in this end of the county, who's trying to get to Germantown campus and doesn't have a car or has a challenge even using the public transportation, it is a big issue. And we're looking at this issue. The other thing is that we're participating in the conversation the county is having regarding its bus rapid transit system and looking at ways that that might connect our campus. But I have a stink of suspicion. You will be graduated and have been alumni, giving back philanthropy to Mr. Sears when you are, before that comes to fruition. So, we, that is something, actually, I have, Dr. Warmack and her team are actually looking at this issue, trying to figure out if there's a way that we can do something in the short term. And I do know that Transportation Committee Group actually has been having this conversations, been doing some research. Will it be in effect by the next calendar year? I don't, the next academic year? I don't think so, but we're trying to figure out how we can do it and put dollars in a very purposeful way to do it. Thank you. We know right now about 15% of our students attend two or more campuses. That was the last data that I saw about a year ago, so I'm pretty sure that data can even go up as well.
Any other questions here in the room?
Well, don't be shy.
Marcus, any online questions come through?
All right. Got one right here.
Up. There we go. If you'd stand, please.
Hi, guys. My name is Jeff. Jeff Elson, to be exact. And I have a question regarding on the graduate, the graduation rate of the campus. And I was actually thinking, why don't we, can we think about having a class called Righteousness in helping our students know the morals and needs of being the best people we could be in the world to help create a positive human spirit, to help us graduate in life and through the college? I think that will help the college graduate rate to go up. And I was, I was trying to suggest that to our faculty and our students and our staffs.
Yeah. I, thank you so much, Jeff, for that because I think you raise an interesting point. We know that our graduation rate is reflective of many different things, but the literature tells us something very specific about our students. One, that they live very complex lives. Many of our students are working full-time, trying to attend school at least part-time, sometimes full-time as well. They have children, they have families that they're trying to manage. They have complex lives in ways that many of us can't even imagine. And oftentimes, literature tells us as well, the students need to connect with someone to not only understand the route through the organization, but also to receive that motivation, that encouragement, that idea of helping them develop a strong sense of self and how to be able to navigate those systems. We actually have a couple of things that are working in that regard. Student Services as a part of the common employee experience with the student engagement work is doing a lot to think about. How do we resituate some of our activities in this regard to craft that experience for students? We also have the Task Force on the Completion Achievement Gap has actually made several recommendations about college culture and how one looks at the ways in which we craft support structures for students. There probably, and those are just two that come to mind, probably at least a dozen or so initiatives looking directly at that. But also, have we named it as such? But I do think you raise an interesting point. Our superintendent in the county keeps talking about hope and resiliency. And if we actually could teach and help inculcate that, we would go a lot further. And he's talking about the K-12 system. They actually have an award where they do the most hopeful teacher on a national basis, and they have a local faculty member who won, a teacher who won that. I think your point is very well taken. How do we talk to our students about perseverance? Help them understand some of those things in very thoughtful and intentional ways. Thank you for that. And I'm loving this. Is this, you know, the, you know, you, all right, you got to explain and talk to me sometime about that. And then a high-top fade is back in? Damn. You know, I was thinking about kid, was it kid and play? You know, that's what I was thinking about. All right.
All right. We have time for one last question from the audience.
I can't. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry.
You got the mic.
Hi. It was kind of going off of Jeff's idea, and it's more of an idea rather than a question. I found out through this college when I first came here, how to find myself through volunteering and service learning, and it means everything to me. And I'm really interested in just figuring out between faculty and staff members and students, how can we make the community college as it is in the community and kind of internationally just more dedicated to volunteering? I haven't seen like an example yet in regards to community colleges that make volunteering perhaps a requirement for graduation, but it is something that's fantastic and it should be more than a requirement. Students should really understand it is a privilege, and it's an amazing opportunity for both the student to learn and, you know, figure out themselves and for the community also. So, could the college do something with that?
I love your, you know, this is, this is what makes me happy about my job. Is it Marian Wright Edelman who had the quote that "service is the price we pay for being a part of this citizenry." I love that idea. And we have very active service learning program here. In fact, Dr. Walker Grifia, last spring break, went with them. Is that, you went through that, to help that? There are several pockets of that throughout the organization. And there are actually colleges and universities that require a community service component. That's something you might think about is transfer, where you might go to an organization that does that. This, and I'll end this because this is actually a very deeply personal issue to me as well. I say this because I think about the ways in which colleges and universities can transform communities. They're often called anchor institutions, and it uses Eds and Meds concept, where educational institutions and medical institutions, they, their health and wellness can only be determined by the health and wellness of the organization, of the community that they live in or are a part of.